I'd like to call to order the May 26, 2020 meeting of the Hingham Board of Selectmen to order, and I'd like to read the following. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting are being recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20-F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone recording the meeting intending to record the meeting this evening? None. Michelle, I don't know whether you can mute everybody, or it looks like everybody's on mute that's not participating right away in the meeting, which is great, it just helps with the background noise. So, thanks for all, thanks for that. And I will move to the approval of the minutes.
This is Joe Fisher. I had proposed some minor edits to the minutes of May 19. I believe they've been circulated. And if there is no objection, I would move to approve those minutes for May 19, 2020.
Is there a second?
Joe, were those, I got a copy of the minutes from Heidi dated timed at 6:11 PM. Did those reflect your edits?
They did not. She circulated a subsequent one immediately prior to this meeting.
I haven't seen them.
I haven't seen that yet, Joe.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
So, why don't we hold off and do those next week, if that's okay with my colleagues?
That's fine with me.
Okay. So, for folks on the call, let me just take you through how we'll run the meeting this evening, and that is, we've got a couple of items on the agenda, liquor license report and some votes by the Harbor Master, our COVID update, Department and Town Administrator reports. We also have proposed votes involving moving the Linden Ponds Voting Precinct and concession agreements between the Town of Hingham and the South Shore Model Railway Club and the Fire Museum. We will take these items in order this evening. Joe and Mary and I will talk about them and ask our questions, and then I will invite members of the public. If you could use the raise hand function, that's probably the best way to get my attention, and we'll call on you, and you'll have an opportunity to participate as well. I just don't want you to think that since we're kind of talking first, you're going to lose your chance. That's not the case. So, I'd like to begin with the transfer of the Common Victular All Alcoholic Beverages License from Cogshill Group to Locals Tacos. We heard this last week, if those of you, some of you may have been on the line. We had some questions with respect to the hours. We thought we would kind of take things in order, and I think it was the preference of the board that we entertain a question with respect to the transfer of a liquor license that mirrors what is in place now for Crow's Landing, and then when and if Locals Tacos is able to get before the planning board, and if they obtain the relief that they're seeking. You know, I think the board would be more than happy to entertain a change to the liquor license as presented. So, I understand that Mr. Taccio could not be with us tonight, but Scott Golding is here, representing, I believe, Cogshill Group LLC. Mr. Golding, I don't know if you have any further comments to make?
No, thank you, and thank you very much. Jeff apologized as he was under the weather today, so I think you summed it up very well. There was a question, I guess, at the last hearing as to the hours, and it is our intention to seek transfer with the current hours, which are 5:00 PM to midnight on weekdays, 9:00 AM to midnight on Saturdays, and 10:00 AM to midnight on Sunday. So, I can answer whatever questions you may have, but I think you summed up kind of what the status is from my understanding from the last hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe, any further questions on this? So, my understanding is what we would be approving tonight is essentially the hours of operation with a liquor license that Crow's Landing has in place right now.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, Joe, any questions on this?
No, satisfied. I know that Police Chief Olson was also satisfied with the transfer, and as long as the hours are the same, I am fine with this.
Mary?
I'm fine as well.
Okay. So, the vote language that we have, I think, was vote language that was in place when we were contemplating providing greater hours than could have been utilized by the applicant without further planning and zoning relief. So, I think we'll need to tweak this a little bit. But one question I did have for you, Mr. Golding, and that is, has Locals submitted a valid certificate of insurance for legal liquor legal liability?
I am not sure, and I would ask Sharon that, but I am not sure I can check on And I would assume that also, that could be a condition of the approval prior to actually receiving the license and being issued, the license by Sharon, that a valid sort of bit of insurance could be presented for the board's review.
Okay. I'm just looking at a note from Sharon, too.
Sharon is on, if you have a question, Karen.
Okay, so Sharon, I'm just looking, yeah, maybe easiest if you just take us through a little bit, this piece of the process.
Pretty simple. I mean, they could pass that in when they get it, but their license will not be approved and given to them until we do receive it. So, as long as we get that after the ABC has their approval, and all boards, you know, town boards are saying the license is okay, we'll ask them to give us the insurance. Once we get that, we can give them the Town of Hingham license.
Okay. So, Sharon, I was going to take out the zoning, or recommend that we take out the reference to the zoning bylaws and special permits for this. Do we need?
That is correct. I think I did send that in a text to you, Karen. I left that in an hour, so I did mean to take that out.
Okay. And how about the reference to the approval of all applicable town boards and departments? Should that stay in?
That's generally pretty standard to keep that in, in case there's, you know, if they were doing any modifications that the building department had to look at, if the health department needed to go in for any reason. So, it's just pretty standard language.
Okay. So, let me just read this, and let's, let me see if you and Joe and Mary would be comfortable with this language then. Just that last sentence, I would recommend saying, "This approval is subject to the approval of all applicable town boards and departments, submission of a valid certificate of insurance evidencing liquor legal liability insurance coverage in at least the minimum statutory amounts, and the approval of the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission." Does that sound right?
That's correct. Yes, perfect.
So, I'm just, so Joe and Mary, on the vote, I'm just deleting, in the last sentence that begins, "This approval is subject," I'm deleting, "to applicable zoning bylaws and special permits." That's a holdover from the prior request to have increased hours.
That language is not in the version of the vote that I have.
Oh, you're lucky.
Yeah. Yeah, Karen, that was sent out, that was sent out right before the start of the meeting, so.
Okay. Well, then, I guess my vote is now consistent with what everyone else is looking at, so that's good.
Would you mind just confirming the hours, just to make sure that we've got the correct hours in the motion?
The hours I have are 5:00 PM to midnight on weekdays, Saturday 9:00 AM to midnight, and Sunday 10:00 AM to midnight.
Yep.
So, I guess what this doesn't pick up, what this doesn't pick up for them is the Monday holiday lunches that they can have, right?
That's correct. That's not on there, wasn't on their past license.
Okay.
But that is correct, Karen.
Well, I'll ask Mr. Golding, is that an issue for you?
I mean, I wasn't at the last hearing. I think it was kind of our understanding, we're going to be coming back in for a transfer. Technically, under the kind of the 1999 special permit, I think that was discussed last time, which relates to the parking and has the restriction on hours. It does permit, it's non-holiday, they can operate on regular weekend hours, so. But since we're going to be back in here looking to, I think, amend our hours in the future, I think we're agreeable kind of to the hours as they currently exist.
The hours I just read to you?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what Jeff had also approved.
Yes.
Were those hours that are on the vote?
The minutes of our last meeting show that they were seeking proposed hours on Friday and Saturday from 10:00 AM to midnight, and then 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Sunday to Thursday.
Yeah, they can't have that without the A3.
Oh, I agree, but these hours, this is showing 9:00 AM to midnight on Sunday, so it's actually more than what they were asking for. They were asking for 10:00, and this is 10:00 AM, and this is showing 9:00 AM. Am I correct about that?
Well, I-
I'm sorry. Oh, excuse me. What day of the week was that, Joe?
Sunday.
On Sunday, so 10:00 AM to midnight. So, what we did is, we communicated with Sharon, and she gave us the current hours that Crow's Landing are operating under, so we're matching, we're identical to what those hours are. That's what we're seeking.
This might, my take from the discussion at our last meeting was, we didn't, that the proposed hours, to the extent that they exceeded what was previously allowed, we were not willing to go for, but we're actually now doing a motion that would have greater hours than what was asked for.
No, I don't think, well, I think I was on board to give them whatever Crow's Landing has, and I guess my question to Sharon is, is this vote that you sent, the most recent vote you sent, are those the Crow's Landing hours?
Yes, I went back to their license and copied them directly from their license.
So, I didn't want to give them any more than Crow's Landing currently had, Joe. So, I wasn't, I didn't want to approve the lunch hours for the non-holiday weekdays in anticipation of the new permit.
Yes.
But if they can, if Crow's Landing could operate during these hours currently, I was willing to approve, I thought we were approving those. So, it sounds like maybe we, last week, those hours didn't match up to what Crow's Landing originally had.
That's right, but I believe our concern was that, to the extent they were seeking hours beyond what was previously allowed, we were not comfortable. But to the extent that they were seeking hours less than what was previously allowed, then I thought we were comfortable.
Yeah, so are you comfortable with these hours or not, I guess?
Well, to the extent that they previously exist, I am, but it's just odd that we are, this motion would grant greater hours in certain circumstances than what the applicant has been seeking.
I agree with that. So, I guess we need to know what it is they want. Mr. Golding, can you speak to this? It seems like-
Yes, and we conferred with our client.
Mr. Golding, could I finish the sentence? I just, this has been a little bit frustrating, okay, and I know it's frustrating to do this in this format, but, you know, I guess, we had been under the impression that your client was seeking, as Mr. Fisher's indicating, fewer hours than Crow's Landing has under its current permit. We are not willing to go further, but it's been a little bit confusing because now we're increasing the hours you asked for, but not, in my mind, not beyond what Crow's Landing would ask. Mr. Golding?
I think that's accurate, and I think that the hours, and I wasn't, as I said on the hearing last week, my understanding was those hours were 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM. I think, you know, taking out all of the issues related to lunch on weekdays, they're essentially looking to adjust their hours to operate till midnight, consistent with what's been done at the property in the past, and to essentially transfer a license with identical hours to what's previously existed there. So, I guess the issue would be seeking to operate, I guess, an hour later, but they're also seeking to open at 11:00 AM, so I think, kind of changing the hours and just seeking to do exactly what's been done there and not altering them over what Crow's Landing was doing, that's what our client is currently seeking to do. Really no change, and I think, I don't necessarily view it as seeking to extend the hours, I think what they were looking for before is, you know, more operating time, including weekdays, and now they're basically seeking to just be able to do, prior to going back into the planning board and having some conditions removed, just being able to operate the same hours that Crow's Landing was able to operate.
Okay. And one more time, Sharon, these hours are identical to the hours that currently appear on a Crow's Landing license. The 5:00 PM to midnight on weekdays, Saturday 9:00 to midnight, Sunday 10:00 to midnight.
Yep, these are the hours that they have had on their license since they were first approved. And I recall, Karen, a year ago, they came in to modify their hours a bit because they were slow in the summer, but the original hours that they were granted are the ones that are on this vote.
Okay, thank you. So, Joe, are you, notwithstanding the fact that the applicant came in looking for fewer hours initially, what I hear Mr. Golding saying is, given the fact that there's no lunch access at this point, they're just looking to have what Crow's Landing has under their license, and I gather from Sharon, this is what Crow's Landing has under its license, so I would be comfortable approving this.
Yes, I agree, I'm also comfortable. We just want to make sure that, to the extent that lunch hours wind up being approved, that we're now not going beyond what the original application had requested. It's sort of, I can see a modification coming in, allowing lunch hours, and then we also have the expanded hours on Sunday. So, just as long as we've got a adequate record, I am fine proceeding in accordance with this vote.
Okay, but I guess, well, that's a discussion for another day. I mean, I think the Sunday hours, they did want a brunch, so they did want to, they did want to open at 10:00. How late they decided, you know, to open on Sunday night, I don't know, but I don't really, I don't, I don't, I don't have an issue with what they're asking for, and if they add lunch in, you know, I guess I'm, I'd like to indicate that I wouldn't, I wouldn't require a reduction in these hours, but discussion for another time. Mary, any further questions on this?
No, I'm all set.
Okay. Let me get out of the vote screen, and... Anybody in the public have a question or a comment with respect to the Locals liquor license? Okay. And there was one, Mr. Golding, there was one other item that you needed to provide, the ABCC, I think Cogshill Group was saying, there was something else you needed to transfer as well?
Yes, they're, they, we're awaiting from Cogshill Group a DUI certificate. My understanding is that they've applied for that, and we'll be providing that to the ABCC as part of their review of the application.
Okay. So, no further discussion on this? I would, the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of an All Alcoholic Beverages Common Victular License from Cogshill Group LLC DBA Crow's Landing to Locals Tacos LLC DBA Locals Tacos E Tequila, 6 Crow Point Lane, Douglas McGregor Manager, with the following operating hours: weekdays, 5:00 PM to midnight, Saturday 9:00 AM to midnight, Sunday 10:00 AM to midnight. This approval is subject to the approval of all applicable town boards and departments, submission of a valid certificate of insurance evidencing liquor legal liability insurance coverage in at least the minimum statutory amounts, and the approval of the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second. All of the same, Joe?
Aye.
Hold on, hold on. Excuse me.
Excuse me, and sorry, who is that?
This is Brian McLaughlin. I'm starting to-
Brian, yeah. I was going to say, this is Scott Golding. That vote included that Douglas McGregor was the manager, and the licensed manager would be Brian McLaughlin.
Sorry about that.
And, sorry, I didn't-
Okay, let me, let me read it one more time.
And I'm sorry to interrupt again, there was also a pledge of the license to 6 Crow Point Realty LLC, who's the landlord as well.
Yeah, that will be a subsequent vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I would accept a motion to approve the transfer of an All Alcoholic Beverages Common Victular License from Cogshill Group LLC DBA Crow's Landing to Locals Tacos LLC DBA Locals Tacos E Tequila, 6 Crow Point Lane, Brian McLaughlin, manager, with the following operating hours: weekdays, 5:00 PM to midnight, Saturday 9:00 AM to midnight, Sunday 10:00 AM to midnight. This approval is subject to the approval of all applicable town boards and departments, submission of a valid certificate of insurance evidencing liquor legal liability insurance coverage in at least the minimum statutory amounts, and the approval of the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
So, moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen? Aye. Okay. Pledge of the liquor license. I think we talked about this last time. Mr. Golding, any comments on this?
No.
Joe, any questions?
No.
Mary?
No. Would you like a motion?
Let me just see, questions for the public? I would love a motion.
I make a motion to approve the request of Locals Tacos LLC DBA Locals Tacos E Tequila for a pledge of license to 6 Crow Point Realty LLC, subject to the approval of the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second.
All is in favor? Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen? Aye. Great. All right, well, thanks, sorry for all the confusion. Well, we got there, and good luck to you. We're really excited to see that place come back alive.
Thank you so much. Very much, we really appreciate it.
All right, take care.
Thank you.
Next, move to the Harbor Master. Harbor Master Corson, saw you were on the line. I think you have a couple updates for us and some regulatory changes that we'd like to discuss tonight, I guess.
That's correct. Can you hear me fine?
Not, not so well.
Is that any better?
Not really, Ken. I can hear you, but not very well.
I'm going to, Karen, I'm going to text Ken and ask him to call in on the phone.
Okay.
He seems muted.
I didn't do it. Oh, he is muted.
Yes.
Yeah, that's not helpful.
I think he muted himself. He's probably trying to call in.
Oh, got it, okay.
Everyone should be able to unmute themselves.
Okay. Good.
Karen, what's the poster? You know, five days since our last accident. We had been having a good streak.
Oh, wow. I mean, I could hear him, but just, we've got a long-
Yeah, that was very faint. Sounded like he was out to sea.
Karen Johnson, can you hear me now?
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, sorry about that. Do you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, so the first thing that I have on the, is for, to go over the Harbor Master truck update.
Okay.
So, what this is about is, last winter, we needed to replace the Harbor Master truck. The board approved $65,000 roughly for us to spend. We are returning $11,694, and after receiving $29,000 in insurance funds, the total cost of the truck to the town was about $24,000.
That's excellent.
So, you asked for me to report back, and I just wanted you to understand what our expenses were on that.
That's great, that's great, great work.
The next thing that I have is-
Hang on, Ken, I just want to make sure Joe and Mary don't have any questions or comments with respect to the truck. I think the turn back, particularly at this, you know, at this juncture, given the circumstances we're in, is really appreciated. Mary or Joe, any questions on the truck?
No.
I would just, my appreciation, Ken, thank you.
Okay.
You're very welcome.
Dredging, dredging update?
Okay, so on the dredging update, what I have before you is, there were several change orders that I, as Harbor Master, I had to approve that were part of the dredging contract, so I'm asking the board to ratify them. They were expected changes, and the first one is, when we had done our pre-dredge survey, it was about a year, a little bit more than a year from the time we started dredging. When it came time to dredge, another dredge survey was done to calculate the different material from the first dredge survey to the second, so that material caused an increase in the value of the contract based upon the cubic yards of additional material. So, that material was dredged, and that caused an increase in the contract, so I wanted the board to be aware of what that increase was, and hopefully the board can ratify the authorization that I put on the sheet for the change in work order.
Okay.
And then the second change order was for the dredging contractor to change from one type of bucket to a second type of bucket so that they could dredge hard material at the boat ramp. The dredging bucket that they used for the general orange basin was designed for mud, and the change to the different one, to the different bucket, was to allow for a dredging of hard compact sand.
Okay, and I gather there were savings in other places in the contract that you were able to apply to this change order, so money that the town might not have spent were spent on this change in bucket, is that fair?
That's correct. So, the change order for the bucket, there's no difference in cost to the town, there were some funds elsewhere in the contract, should we come along dred, not dredge, come across any type of ledge, if we had to remove ledge, we didn't have to do anything like that, so we're able to apply some of the funds elsewhere in the contract to cover the change for the bucket.
Okay. And how much, how much was the change for the bucket?
That was about $65,000 to change the bucket.
Okay. So, in total, on a $4 million total project, is that about right?
The dredging itself was around 3,000 plus engineering, some other ancillary expenses associated with morgue management.
Three million.
Three million. Right, Ken?
Yes, that's correct.
So, I mean, $123,000 for volume increase and $65,000 for the bucket on a $3 million contract is pretty well-named project. Anything further on those, and I'll open it up to Joe and Mary for questions?
I don't have anything else to contribute on that, I just, I guess I do want to mention on change order one, there was also an equitable adjustment for a marine mammal observer, that was to have an observer on the dredge scowl when it went out to the dumping grounds, just to make sure that there wasn't any interference with any of the mammals in the water. So, that was required, and that was also included in change order one.
Great, okay. Joe, any questions?
Just, just one, I think this was a great job, and the question is whether or not the Harbor Master is satisfied with the work as it was done.
Yes, I'm happy with the work that the contractor did. They did a great job. Everything in the town's portion was down to the negative six feet at Mimo Water, so I'm happy with the work they did. There was no damage to any of the wharves or anything like that, so I'm very satisfied with what they did.
Thank you.
Mary, any, any questions?
No, you know, I would, I would just also mention, and you know, Ken, I think we've talked about this five or six times, you know, during the course of this project, and one of the things that we were never really sure of is how much material would need to be removed. I think Ken was very good in giving us ranges, and I think he also impressed on us-
us the fact that if the town were to have initiated the dredging this past season, we would have, it would have made it possible for that to be done in one season versus two because, you know, you may recall, there were time limits on when the dredging could start and when it had to be finished, so, you know, while there is this kind of a change order, I look at the overall cost, I look at the overall management and I couldn't be more pleased with the job that Ken did on behalf of the town, in particular, his ability to secure a $2 million grant towards, towards this activity.
Completely agree, Mary. Questions from the public with respect only to the dredging update, see, John Kenny?
Yeah, hi, thanks for acknowledging me, I'm a town resident and a co-owner of Hingham Harbor Marina, I just have a couple of questions, you know, a year ago, over a year ago, we were asked for a letter of support by Ken so that he could, to help him secure the funding for the project and we happily obliged, from that point forward, we were neither consulted nor were we included in the permit submission, this was different than in 2009 or any other year. We pointed that out to Ken, he thanked us for pointing out the oversight and in his email of April 30th of last year, he acknowledged it and promised to correct it, he reiterated that multiple times, including at, at many harbor development committee meetings in the interim. So the plan didn't include the private marinas nor the freely navigable areas leading to the marinas and my questions are, why didn't he follow through promptly, remember, this is April 30th, the permit lasted for another nine months, the work didn't even start for five, how are you gonna rectify this situation, when are you gonna complete the public portion, what do you tell slipholders who pay the same dockage fees as all other boaters when they ask why they will not have enough water depth at low tide to enjoy safe recreational boating, and so how much money are you retaining for completion of the project?
All right, I don't wanna get too far off course here, but Ken, it seems like some technical questions with respect to the, the areas that were dredged and a, and a process question for you, if you could, if you could respond.
Yes, absolutely, so the entire Inner Harbor mooring basin was included in the dredging project, that includes the area under the private marinas, unfortunately, we're unable to dredge there because the Army Corps, I believe it is, did not issue a permit allowing the material to go offshore, so we could not, we could not dispose of that material offshore, therefore, any of the, the area under the marinas could not be dredged.
And was this area dredged in 2009?
I believe the majority of that, of the area under and around the slips, the private marinas was dredged in 2009, I don't believe the entire area, but I believe a, a large portion of it was.
Well, if I may, the answer is not directly responsive to my question, my question was, why wasn't there prompt follow-through, I think Ken will acknowledge that in point of fact, the sampling for the marinas wasn't even done till November, it's often the case that there are multiple sampling passes and methods to ensure that you can pass environmental standards, but again, April 30th, he acknowledges and promises to correct it and there's no sampling done until November, at which point we're up against the wall and, and can't get it done, so, and I'd further say that, yeah, the, the basin was dredged, but the area that's freely navigable between the two marinas was not dredged and I want to be able to, I, I wanna know what Ken's gonna tell boaters who pay the same dockage fees as mooring holders when they can't get to their slip because the town didn't dredge the highway that went to their vessel location, I just don't know how to, how to answer that.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Kenny, I think that in terms of responsiveness, the way the, you know, it may seem a little artificial, but the way that it works is you ask your questions to the board and then the board poses the questions to Ken, so, you know, Ken's responding to me, okay, and I appreciate the comments that you're making, I know, I know it's a little bit nuanced, but that's the way the, the meeting runs, so, you know, I, I think that in terms of a, a public meeting, I hear these concerns and I think that, Ken, it would be helpful to me if we could talk tomorrow in more detail about this process piece of it and I guess the, the question Mr. Kenny did raise was, you know, everything's back in the water now, has the contract been concluded or we, we've signed off so we don't, we don't have any, you know, there's no opportunity to, to make changes at this point, is that fair?
Um, the contractor has completed the project, we still have permits that are valid for several more years, so if we were able to get that material approved for offshore disposal, then that, those areas could, could still be dredged, I believe, under the current permits.
Okay.
Yeah, and Karen, I appreciate the, the, the process we need to adhere to here because we don't need to use everybody's time on this, the reason I bring it up is that there have been any number of inquiries to the town administrator, to Ken, to this board, this committee, that have gone unanswered and so I do appreciate you, your willingness to follow up with Ken and then engage with us around it, thank you very much.
Karen, this is Tom, do you mind if I jump in for a sec?
Uh, sure.
So I just wanted to point out that Mr. Kenny's and through his attorney has been notified by our attorneys that because there are underlying legal questions that they've raised, our attorneys have been working with them, both John and Karen, Susan are on the phone, I don't think we should get into that tonight, but I just wanted you and the public to realize that the, the response to the question from this group has been through our attorneys and, and that's where that resides right now, appropriately so.
Okay, well, you know, as Kenny said, I think there are some process details and some substantive details that would be helpful to be briefed about tomorrow and, and then we can figure out where we go from there.
Okay.
Further questions from the public with respect to the dredging update? Seeing none, I'm wondering, I think John Coughlin's on the line, I'm, I'm not quite sure of this, of the vote, the vote language, we, the way the vote language is prepared, we're acknowledging our review and ratification of the change orders authorized by the Harbor Master during the 2019 dredging project, I would have assumed that we had just, well, I, I can't remember that far back, but I'm assuming we signed the dredging contract on behalf of the town and so we would actually need to approve the amount of this change order, it strikes me, but John, I'm just wondering if you have some thoughts?
Yeah, I haven't seen the original, I didn't have time to go back and look at the original contract, but given that it's over 50,000, which is the limit for the town administrator to sign under the special act, I think the Board of Selectment is the only entity that has the legal authority to bind the contract to that, the town to that contract, so I think we could, I think we could make that, that the Board of Selectment approves the change orders versus.
Yep.
Just going back and ratifying them, yep, and I only got that late today, so I didn't have a chance to look at that.
Yeah, Mary, no, I, I hear you, but I, I think I'd be more comfortable with that approach because I didn't, I didn't have an opportunity to go back to the contract to see, you know, where the delegations were and I would agree with you, this amount exceeds sort of the administrative best business practice. Uh, okay, Joe or Mary, any further questions, I guess I would, I would amend the vote so that we're actually approving the change order under the contract for the amount that Ken has specified in his write-up to us.
Is there, just, Ken, is there any reason you need the language ratified?
No, I'm fine with your, the approval language, there's no reason I need that.
Mary, any, anything else?
Uh, no.
Okay, Joe, do you wanna try to craft something or want me to try to craft something?
Sure, let me try it right now, I move that the board acknowledges that it has reviewed and hereby approves the change orders authorized by the Harbor Master during the 2019 dredging project.
And I, I would say, I might add to that, resulting in a increase to the contract cost in the amount of $123,416.
Is, and that encompasses both order one and order two?
I believe so, because the.
It says no net increase, I just wanna make sure that that's the final number.
Yeah, that's the final number, the no net increase was for change order two specifically.
Okay, yep, then that's, that, I would tack that on to the motion, yes.
I'll second the motion as amended.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion as amended, say aye, Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen? Aye. Excellent, okay. All right, now, Ken, I gather we are not, we are just taking up COVID-related changes to the regs tonight, is that, is that correct?
Um, I have before the board COVID-related changes as well as changes to the general mooring regulations, if the board decides to only take up one, that's fine with me.
Well, I, I would say that I, I had a number of questions and I think, I think my colleagues may have had questions too, I, I saw that you responded to me late this afternoon and I appreciate that, but I haven't had an opportunity to go back and sort of synthesize your responses with my questions and in particular, I had with respect to the, the regulations proper, not the COVID regulations centered around the penalty provision for dredging and so I guess I'm, I'm really not prepared to move on the, on the regulations as a whole until I have an opportunity to go back and look at the answers you provided, provided to me.
Absolutely, let's table that then for this meeting, we don't need to address it, there's no rush to, to go forward with anything on them.
Joe, Mary, are you, are you okay with that? I, I, I just.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that, I spent probably about an hour with the Harbor Master today going over the regulations and I'm comfortable moving that discussion, our discussion to a subsequent meeting.
Okay.
Karen, that's, that's fine with me, I actually, looking at the agenda posting, I, I questioned whether we could even take up the overall regulations when I, when I looked at the posting just right before the meeting, what I might request, if, if it's agreeable to you and to Joe and to Ken, is that, is that the draft regulations be posted so that members of the public who are interested can take a look at what's proposed to be changed.
Yeah, and I guess before, maybe before we do that, and I think it should be posted as a red line, Ken, I think the red line was really helpful, maybe before we move to post the red line though, whatever questions Joe and Mary and I had, we can bring those to ground, have those reflected in the red line and then post that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just talking about expediting this, also, I know that, you know, Ken's been getting a lot of feedback and he's been working pretty hard to, you know, kind of sort everything out, especially in light of COVID, I think for members of the public in advance of a discussion next week to know the scope of the proposed changes might just make it easier for everybody.
Yep, I agree with that, and just so everybody knows, you know, as Mary said, I think Ken has been hosting several public meetings on changes to the mooring regulations, while the COVID-19 regulations will take up tonight, do address anchorage in World's End and the like, these, the, the, the overall changes to the regulations don't, don't address that, so, you know, I think we're taking some more time to kind of figure out longer term what the right answer is for that particular location under the regulations, but if, if we could continue, and I agree with you, Mary, I think the posting's a little, to me, narrower and this is a, this is a, an item that I think is of wide interest, so.
Agreed.
Okay, so Ken, if we could move to the COVID-19 related changes to the regulations? Ken?
Yes, I'm here, yep.
Could you take us through what you're proposing for the changes to the COVID regu- regulations?
Yes, so basically what we're looking to do with the COVID regulations is the state has prohibited the, the tying or rafting of vessels, so we're looking to adopt that locally, so we're not the ones actually stating that people can't tie, tie vessels, that's being done at the state level and we're adopting it locally, but we're taking it a little bit further specifically in, in the World's End area because we have concerns over the large number of boats that visit World's End and the limited number of, of moorings, so we only have about 40 moorings at World's End, if we have 100 or 200 boats going to World's End and they all try to anchor on a single point anchor, there's just, we don't, we don't feel comfortable that there's enough space to maintain safe navigable, navigable waters and also have the appropriate distance between boats to protect people against COVID and keep it a safe distance for operation of the boat, so we're looking to, in that area prohibit anchoring with one exception, vessels that have a hangam mooring permit. So that's essentially what the, the COVID-19 temporary mooring regulations address.
So, so no one would be allowed to drop an anchor in World's End, in the World's End area unless they hold a 2020 hangam mooring docking permit and people that hold a 2020 mooring docking permit would be those who keep a boat in and around the, the hangam waterways, right, so Hewitt's Cove, the Inner Harbor, the Yacht Club, right?
That's correct, yes, and the reason we chose the, the mooring permit is it gives us the ability to anchor some boats and manage it because it's a, it's a system we already have in place, we're already issuing these permits, so we don't have to create something new to manage and allow anchoring and it helps to keep boats local, which is one of the goals, so it allows the, the people that are in hangam to be able to anchor over there and stay local.
How many, how many permit holders are there?
Um, in hangam, we have about 1,500 mooring permits that we issue.
Okay. And how about the moorings themselves, would, so this requirement is just if you wanna anchor, but the, but the moorings themselves, do, do people on those moorings have to have a, a hangam mooring permit?
So the people that go to those moorings, they don't necessarily have to have a hangam mooring permit, so some of the moorings are owned by clubs and you might have a club in, let's just say, Charles Town, they, all those boats that, that go to that mooring won't necessarily have a mooring permit for that mooring, but that club will have a permit, so anyone from that club could go use that mooring, but there won't be any rafting or tying because of the state regulations, so one boat from that club would be able to go and use that, that mooring, we do have four transient moorings that anyone is able to sign up for online and use.
And that's irrespective of whether you have a, a hangam mooring permit?
Correct, exactly, so if, if anyone from any community or any harbor would like to go to World's End, they still have the ability, there's four transient moorings, they can go online, they can reserve one of the mooring, one of the transient moorings and pay the fee and then they can use that mooring for that day.
Okay, um, and how many, how many boats, you said like 200 boats could safely anchor, is, am I overstating that in?
Well, what, I'm not saying 200 boats could safely anchor, it really depends on the tide, at, at low tide, there's significantly less water there than high tide, but on, on a typical weekend, we can see anywhere from 200 to 400 boats in there, so the reason for implementing the, the anchoring restriction is that it's, it doesn't seem possible to anchor 200 to 400 boats on single point anchors without the ability to raft.
Right, I guess what I, I just am curious, I, I get that, that requiring this permit allows you to contain your universe, but I don't understand how that limits the number of people that might be showing up at World's End and trying to anchor.
So, so I understand what you're saying, we could, even though we've restricted it to boats with a hangam mooring permit from 2020, we still could have more boats trying to anchor than we have space for, so we still have to regulate it in that respect, but it gives us a base to start with rather than just having the. but it gives us a base to start with rather than just having the entire world, or not the entire world, but more specifically the entire Boston metro area going to World's End and having, having to have us turn away large number of boats. So it'll decrease the, the potential number of boats that can go there, giving us the ability of, of a number that we can work to maintain safe anchoring.
And what's your enforcement plan then? So.
So we, we traditionally have one or two boats in World's End on the weekend due to the high number of, of boats there. So we have camera, we have a camera that can help us monitor, and we have boats that will be underway routinely checking on it and then making sure that it's not overly populated.
Okay. And let's assume it gets overly populated. What do you, what, what's your plan then?
If we had a problem with too many boats, then we would ask some of the boats that we feel are just arriving to leave, or if there's a couple of areas where boats are too congested, we would ask some of them to leave.
Okay.
It'll be educational.
Well, that's one, one way to put it.
I mean, we do have the ability to issue fines, but I'm hoping we don't have to issue fines. I think we can work with the boating public to, to make it work for, make, make it so it works for them.
All right, let me just ask one more question, then I'll turn it over to Joe and Mary. My, my other question is just what other, other South Shore towns are doing that have similar gathering points? I know not, I know no place has, has a location quite like World's End, but like what about the Spit or the Sandbar in Cohasset, the Spit in Situate? What are, what are those municipalities doing with respect to the use of those locations?
Yeah, so that's a great question. I talked with several harbor masters from, you know, this area all the way down to Oak Bluffs, and they aren't allowing rafting. Obviously, that's one of the state guidelines. But a lot of the harbors really don't have anchoring like we do here in Hangum. Specifically, Situate, Cohasset, they don't have anchoring like we do here in Hangum. We did have some discussions about the Spit and how they're handling that. I'm not exactly sure how they're addressing the issues over there, but they're working on it. So I really can't speak to that, but I think that this is a solution that will work here in Hangum.
Okay. I, anyway, it'd be helpful to understand, you know, it, traffic is going to go somewhere, right? So we, we take an action, that traffic is going to go somewhere. And, you know, I, I, I understand that they're not anchoring, but they're still gathering. And I'm just, I'm curious as to whether Cohasset's going to, you know, require Cohasset permits over there, or Situate's going to require Situate permits, or what the, what the approach is going to be. Joe?
Yes, so.
Okay.
So far, they haven't, they, to my knowledge, there isn't any regulation like that in place in those communities. But I don't really want to speak for them. But we have a unique situation here. We really don't see an anchoring spot as we do in World's End in many places.
Okay, okay. Joe, questions?
Yes, and I'd say that you, your questions have really been on point as to the issues that we need to be considering. Ken, am I correct that the temporary regulations that you're proposing, would they expire when the state's temporary regulations expire?
So they're not set to expire when the state's regulations expire. These will automatically expire a year later unless they're sooner, you know, replaced with another regulation or rescinded. So we didn't want them to automatically expire. We wanted to make sure that, that when the state regulations change, we have the ability to assess what's going on here in town and make the appropriate adjustment. So for instance, if the state allows the, allows the rafting or tying of boats, but there's still some restriction on the, the number of people that are able to gather in a certain area, we want to make sure that we, we are still able to regulate the number of people gathering in a specific area. So it does, it's not hinged upon some other occurrence. It'll be a decision that, the way I have a proposed hair is I would make that decision as things lighten up and consultation with the police chief and not necessarily have to come back to the board for a vote, but we'd be able to loosen these up as things improve and, and the state lifts restrictions. We'd be able to freely lift these restrictions.
So we're going to have, I'd expect that you'd have a communications issue to the extent that, for example, it's announced, if it's announced, that the prohibition against, the prohibition against tying boats has been removed by the state. There's likely to be the assumption that it is correspondingly removed by the town. So I just would hate to have boaters ill-informed as to what rules apply. So what, what's the mechanism for making sure that we're communicating clearly to those who need to know what the rules are?
Yep, so we'll be able to communicate this to our, to boating public directly through email to our, our permit holders, but we'll also be able to publish this on the website. I would anticipate and hope that if the state lifted the rafting or tying restriction, that we would be able to do it simultaneously with them. That would be my goal, but we just didn't want to have it expiring at the same time as, as some other occurrence.
Yep.
Joe, can I follow up on that? Because I, I had a question in that regard as well. It just feels a little funny to me that the whole rationale is dependent on the governor's declaration of the state of emergency and all of the state guidelines, and we are complying. Absent, absent all this stuff, we wouldn't be doing this. And I raised the same question with, with Ken about, you know, those, the, the regulations sunsetting when the circumstances that are giving rise to the regulation no longer exist. So I don't, I don't know. I, it, it feels funny to me that, that it wouldn't be linked to changes at the state level.
I, I think.
If the board would like, I, I'm fine with, with having the, if the board's comfortable with it and would like it, we can absolutely change this so that upon the, the lifting of the requirements by the state, that this would also be rescinded. If you'd like to, to change it, I'm fine with that.
Okay, I just, I'd like to hear from my colleagues. I don't know, it just felt funny to me. So sorry, Joe, to jump in.
No, I, I, and that, that's a great follow-up. I think, I mean, I know that the state guidelines, guidelines specifically anticipated that there would be additional local guidelines. So if, if there are local conditions here, Ken, that warrant the continuation of one or more of these special conditions, even after the state lifts them, I think you should have that, the ability to continue. So I think we need a more reasoned approach than simply it goes on indefinitely or it automatically goes away. Because as we, we've all noted, there are conditions in Hangum that are, are unique, and I just want to make sure that we are recognizing them.
Further questions, Joe?
Yeah, I was just going to ask Ken about other aspects of the rules. I mean, we've talked about, you know, a couple of things. What about boat ramps? Are you comfortable with, with the, the regulations with respect to boat ramps? And whether or not there are additional aspects of the, the rules that you're concerned with? For example, the loiter, loitering on the ramps, the use of the ramps for other purposes? You know, congregating on the ramps. Are you comfortable with the, your proposed guidelines in that regard?
Yes, so the state has issued a whole bunch of other guidelines in addition to the, the no rafting or tying of boats. And I'm, I'm fine with the regulations that have been issued by the Commonwealth of State. I don't see that we need to adopt anything locally. We've been already addressing a lot of those issues through education, and I feel comfortable that we'll be able to address those. Just the big concern that we have, and when I say we, this was something that was discussed with the chief of police, the fire chief, the executive health officer, just the large number of people that could be going into World's End from many different geographic regions was of concern. So that's why we've looked to address that specifically. But every, all the other guidelines issued by the state, I feel comfortable that we're going to be able to address without adopting anything locally here. Those guidelines do also articulate that the harbor master still has the ability to, you know, to address local issues. That's something that is still here. So that's one reason I didn't want this to just expire upon the occurrence of the state lifting the guidelines. We want to make sure that whatever we do here in Hangum works for our waterways and for the public.
Right, but there, there is a, a middle ground between it going on forever, if you will, and immediately expiring when the states expire, and that would be some sort of trigger. So for example, if the state regulations expire, there would be two weeks for the, for you to consider it, or else it automatically, or then it expires so that you've got some period of time that if you think it needs to continue, you'll have your discussions, you'll have your appropriate meetings, and then, then the public will know, they'll be brought into the process. That's, that's the approach that I would prefer.
I'm on board with that. I think that sounds great.
And that, I have nothing further, Karen.
Enforcement on the, on the boat ramp, Ken, is that state jurisdiction? Or do you have jurisdiction to enforce the regulations on the boat ramp?
So I have jurisdiction to enforce that on the boat ramp concurrently with the state.
Okay, thanks. Mary, questions?
Just a couple of comments. Ken and I spoke earlier today about, about these particular regulations, and I think that there are a couple of different considerations that have led to, have led to this recommendation. I think the intent of the governor's order with respect to rafting and tying up of boats is to manage the number of gatherings and the, the number of people in gatherings. And I don't think without, without this anchoring provision, I think that the intent of the governor's order is, is not going to be held in, particularly in the World's End area, so I think that that's really important. I also think that there's a safety consideration. When you have a number of boats that are anchored close to one another, the possibility for lines to get tangled, people having to jump in the water to free lines, it just, the, the safety implications of that for the boaters is on my mind, as well as the safety for the harbor master staff. If you have large gatherings and people are not, for example, wearing masks and things, I think we have to make sure that, that our town employees are able to do their jobs in a, in a safe fashion. I do think that there is a lot of uncertainty here, like there is with so many other aspects of COVID, which is, you know, how many hangam mooring permit holders will go to World's End? My family typically doesn't go to World's End on our boat. Maybe we will start going. It, it is, it is really hard to know, but I think that, that we're going to have to sort of see where it goes. With respect to, you know, these conditions expiring or something, I do believe that, that the local conditions of the intensity of rafting at World's End warrant some sort of a mechanism for the town to decide whether or not to remove that restriction. I, I wouldn't feel comfortable with, you know, just when the governor's expires, hangum's expires. I understand what Joe is saying about some sort of a trigger that will help inform people. I'm, I'm comfortable with, with that concept. I'm comfortable with, with what he's proposing. I, I would also just say that, you know, with, with the requirement that anchoring, that, you know, again, permit holders have to maintain at least 50 feet of distance between vessels. You know, the way I'd see this going is, you know, you go into World's End, and if you can't find 50 feet of distance between another vessel, you know, you, you move on. I, I, I'm not, I'm not so worried about that piece of it. So I'm comfortable with moving ahead on this. I would support if, if what Joe is proposing with respect to some local conditions or timing. And I thank Ken for the time that he took with me earlier today to talk about this.
Great. So I do have a couple more questions, but I will, at this point, open it up to the public for questions with respect to the temporary mooring, anchoring, and town pier regulations related to COVID. Not seeing any hands raised. So, you know, Mary and Joe, I thought very thoughtful comments. Ken, you've done a lot of work on this. I guess I'm still just concerned that, you know, cutting the universe of people who can maybe come in and find a spot to anchor at World's End. I'm just really worried that, you know, particularly on, you know, the, the seasonally busy weekends like the Fourth of July period, let's say. I just, I, I, I am, I'm concerned about the enforcement plan as you're describing it tonight. I'm, I'm concerned that, and I don't know, Mary, you know, you're on the water and I'm not, but I wonder about people, instead of turning around and leaving, thinking they can fit themselves in to places that might, might not be appropriate. And I'm just wondering about, you know, at some point, having, having harbor master boats at the entrance to, to World's End, you know, unfortunately turning people around there rather than, you know, having them come into that, to that zone, attempt to anchor and then be asked to leave. I, I, I'm concerned about the, the safety of both the public and harbor master folks, and I'm just worried about those interactions being, being very difficult. And I'm, I'm just wondering if there's a, a more proactive approach to this, which is part of the reason I was asking Ken what, you know, what other places with, with anchorage, you know, were doing and what their enforcement plan is? Because I, again, I'm, I'm troubled by this.
Well, I, I completely understand your concern, and it's a valid concern. But I think that our ability to, to manage this as I proposed, I, I'm not concerned about it. I think that we'll be able to do it just fine. I, I don't think that we'll see so many boats with hangam mooring permit racing over there to anchor. And I think if we do have a large number, I think that we'll be able to work with them to, to address any of the concerns. So I'm not overly concerned about it. I understand the concern and I appreciate it, and I'm glad you've thought of that. But I think that we're going to be able to manage this just fine. The other alternative is having just too many boats and making it even more difficult to manage. So I'm comfortable with it, but if you have some suggestions you'd like me to consider, I'm, I'm open to it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Okay, we're going to work, we're going to do a lot to educate the public. We're going to send out email notices. We'll put some stuff online. I know the word spreads very quickly. I'm sure I'll be getting plenty of phone calls, and we'll, we'll really do our best to educate the public. But I think it's, I, I do think this is a workable proposal, and if it's not, then I can always come back to the board with something different if you'd like.
Yeah, I'd like to point out something else too, which is that, you know, the, the season is actually just kind of starting. So a couple of things. I think that if, if we take some ti, if, if we don't adopt this tonight, I think that we need to understand that this weekend, there will be no restrictions. And I think that when, no matter what the town puts in place, if there's time where there are no restrictions put in place, it makes Ken and his team's job tougher. I, I would also say that, you know, a, as the boating season starts and in the lead up to Fourth of July, which is, you know, in, in four or five weeks, you know, if, if Ken and his team find that, you know, on a given weekend, the amount of traffic that they're getting in there is greater than they expect, you know, we, we, we do have the ability to come back and make an adjustment. And while I realize that that's not always the ideal situation, I do like the fact that in, in looking at a way to manage and limit the, you know, the, the, the folks that could anchor in World's End, it's being done based on, you know, hangam mooring permit holders. So that, to me, is, is a way that's easy for Ken and his team to see whether you have a permit or you don't have a permit. I think it's also somewhat consistent with actions that other towns are taking with respect to kind of their, you know, outdoor, outdoor spaces. I mean, it, it strikes me as a reasonable approach, and if in the next two weekends, it, it. it, it feels unwieldy, I would trust Ken to come back to us with, with an alternative. I, I think if he's telling us that this is manageable, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, I mean, I, I think that, I think it needs a robust communication plan, and I think it's, you know, I don't know whether the harbor masters have any sort of association, but I think, you know, I think for the greater Boston area, I think it'd be helpful to make sure that this gets out there, to yacht clubs, to, you know, to other, you know, boating groups, so that people aren't coming all the way down here only to be turned away. Further questions?
Chairman Johnson, just to comment on that, there is a, an association for yacht clubs and marinas, I do plan on sending them a notice of these, of these changes, so they can distribute it to the various yacht clubs and marinas in the area. So I am going to make a lot of efforts to get this word out and make sure people are educated and informed on this regulation.
Okay, Police Chief Olson.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for the opportunity, Police Chief Glenn Olson. The committees have been working with the harbor master on coming up with these plans, and we realize that in many ways, Hingham's waterways are unique, and often these regulations are designed to the general public and the general different areas. And I think one of the ideas is that we did actually bring to him in earlier discussions was to sort of allow the permit owners from Hingham to ma, to be able to use that area, that way it was easier for us to manage and control, we had access of who they were and where they came from. That was sort of a compromise, I believe, that we brought into, and I also feel that a couple times we've been talking about the Fourth of July, and I don't think the Fourth of July is going to be as big down this, in this area because of the cancellation of fireworks. That harbor is really, really busy around firework seasons on the Fourth, so the, the easiest way for us, and I, we've talked to Ken about management, we averaged for the extra patrols out in the area, and also if we get a consistent message out there early, people will adopt to it. I'd rather go strong and have to change it, but I think in the beginning, if we educate the people and get them used to it, they'll adapt, they're, they understand that this is a unique year, and under COVID-19, I think people are willing to make some concessions. So I'm pretty confident that that Ken's plans will be able to outwork for this.
Okay, thank you. Further questions from the public, questions or comments? Seeing none, I would accept a motion, but I, Joe, did, did you want to change the second whereas clause, or are you happy to leave it as it is?
So the, I'm looking at the proposed vote for the COVID-19-related mooring.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm not seeing a whereas clause there.
So I was looking at the, the regulations themselves.
Oh.
So it says, in, in, I don't know, maybe there's a way just to work it into our vote, but the, the clause I was, I think you and I had talked about was, "The temporary sections of this mooring anchoring and town pier regulation shall be effective upon adoption and shall automatically expire one year from the, or eight years from the date of adoption, unless receded, modified, or superseded at a sooner date." So.
So I was, I was thinking of changing our vote by adding a sentence that would say that within two weeks of any changes to the state guidelines on boating and various other marine and inland waterway-related activities, that the harbor master inform the board of selectmen of any proposed change, changes to the Hingham guidelines, and, you know, and basically have something that, to make sure that we're informed of any proposed changes and that there's communication to the boating and general public.
Yeah, I, I like that. Ken, is that, is two weeks sufficient?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, would you like to make a motion?
I would make a motion pursuant to Article 15 of the Town of Hingham General Bylaws. The Board of Selectmen hereby acknowledge, review, and acknowledge, review, and approve to the extent necessary the harbor master's approval of these temporary regulations, with the understanding that the harbor master may relax these temporary regulations as the harbor master deems appropriate after consultation with the Chief of Police and the Executive Health Officer of the town, and that within two weeks of any changes to the state guidelines on boating and various other marine and inland waterway-related activities, that the harbor master inform the board of selection of any proposed changes to these temporary regulations.
All those in favor? Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
And listen, Ken, you know, I think, you're going to relax the regulations, I think you've always done this, I, I think more information's better, and, you know, the more, the more you're able to keep the board of selectmen informed about how this is progressing, I, I just think we're all better off.
Absolutely, I will continue to keep the board informed.
Great, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
All right. COVID-19 update. Tom and Michelle?
Karen, I just had a quick suggestion, I don't know if you want to do this or not, but we do have a couple of votes on the concession agreement, do you want to do those first? Susan Murphy is on, should we need help with those, or we can run through the COVID-19 update and follow the order, whatever your, your preference.
Yeah, let's just, let's just do the update, okay?
Absolutely. Let's see. Okay, so COVID-19 update for today, and COVID-19 cases, in terms of the latest data, as of last Wednesday, Department of Public Health has, was reporting 237 laboratory confirmed cases. As of today, DPH is reporting 93,693 cases in Massachusetts, of which 7,632 are in Plymouth County. Please keep in mind that the numbers reported by the state are lower than the actual number of cases, because they only include those who have tested positive. About 2.2% of reported Massachusetts cases are currently hospitalized. The number of hospitalized COVID-19 patients has been slowly decreasing since April 21st, according to DPH data, and the percent of, percent of people testing positive for COVID-19 continues to de, to decrease as well. Regarding fields and courts, per Governor Baker's Phase 1 reopening plan, Hingham Athletic Fields and Tennis Courts are now open, but with restrictions, which I'll mention in a minute. Basketball courts and street hockey courts remain closed at this time. Although the number of new COVID-19 cases reported each week has started to decrease, the threat of the virus has not yet passed. We have seen, we have sent these guidelines out via email, our website, and on social media, but they are worth reiterating here. Please adhere to the following state guidelines when using athletic fields and tennis courts to help prevent a resurgence of COVID-19. Only non-contact sports and activities with no shared equipment are allowed. No pickup games or organized games or tournaments are allowed. No groups larger than 10 are allowed to gather. Wear a face covering when you cannot maintain a social distance of six feet from others. Sanitize hands before and after play. Do not share equipment with others. Clean and wipe down equipment after use. Wait outside the field of play until previous users have vacated the facility to ensure proper social distancing. Thank you for keeping yourself and your neighbors safe by respecting these guidelines and responsibly enjoying Hingham's outdoor athletic facilities. I also wanted to give an update on the farmer's market. The farmer's market reported a very successful pilot market this past Saturday at the Station Street parking lot. Over 100 vehicles arrived to collect pre-ordered items from the eight vendors who participated in opening day. Hingham police and volunteers from Hingham Link assisted with traffic flow and helped everything run very smoothly. Regarding town meeting, so last Friday, this board consult, after consultation with the town moderator and other public health and safety officials, voted to hold the 2020 annual town meeting outdoors on the Hingham High School football field on Saturday, June 20th, at 2:00 p.m., with a rain date of June 21st, Sunday, June 21st, at 2:00 p.m. We plan to start registration at 12:30 p.m., and will require attendees to practice social distancing for the entire event, starting with waiting in line to check in. Chairs will be placed at least six feet apart, if not more, on the football field. We have a team of experts from town hall, from town staff, working on comprehensive town meeting plan, a comprehensive town meeting plan that includes traffic and parking plans, social distancing guidelines, cleaning, sanitation protocols, emergency response preparedness, et cetera. We will share more details about town meeting in the coming weeks, and we'll publish that information through multiple channels. And regarding reopening of town facilities, while municipal facilities are not yet open to the public, we continue to allow employees limited access to files and equipment necessary to improve their ability to serve the public. We are following all state guidance in developing our employee reopening plans, which include employing, employing additional COVID-19-related safety measures, including, related to PPE usage, enhanced cleaning protocols, signage, and training, among, among other things. Michelle?
Thank you. For the town services update tonight, I'm trying to highlight a few departments that we don't normally highlight. So over the last two months, since we've been working remotely, Mike Clancy and his building department team have issued 459 permits, conducted 780 inspections, responded to over 1,061 phone calls, and responded to 10 after-hours emergencies. Staff members have done a great job continuing to serve homeowners, contractors, and town departments as usual. In our assessing office during the last two months, Rick Nowlan and his team have completed three to 400 exterior property inspections and input approximately 700 to 900 properties into Vision, which is our assessing database. Right now, they're finishing up abatements from FY20, inputting properties for the FY21 preliminary bill, and preparing for the FY21 interim revaluation. From the Recreation Department, many people have been reaching out to our Rec Department with questions about summer camps. Rec is planning to move forward with their summer programs when given the green light by state and local officials. They're moving forward with scheduling and hiring, hiring processes and preparation. However, they will have to wait for state and local government approvals and guidelines, and their programs, like many things, may look different this year, to ensure that they're running compliance with these new guidelines. While no camps are allowed in the current Phase 1, we do expect guidance from the state soon about possibly reopening recreational day camps on a phased basis in Phase 2. Mark Thorell and his team will share more information as it becomes available. My last report is from the School Department. Hingham Public Schools continues its work on three distinct priorities right now. The first is the Remote Learning 2.0 Plan, which is currently in place and will be ongoing until year end. The second is planning and implementing year-end closeout, which involves allowing teachers into classrooms to get personal belongings and organize materials that need to be returned to students, and allowing students to pick up personal belongings, drop off textbooks, technology, library books, et cetera. All of these things are being managed with social distancing and cleaning high-touch surfaces as the highest priority. And finally, the third, school staff are beginning to plan for summer school in the September return. Dr. Austin has created four working groups for the planning processes as follows. The first is a Recovery Advisory Committee, consisting of school and municipal leadership, district staff, and parent and student representation. The second is a Finance, Facilities, and Operations Committee. The third is a District Instructional Planning/Student Health Committee, and the fourth is a Special Education and Student Services Committee. The school expects more state guidance on protocols for the fall, but discussions are beginning now, so they can contemplate and plan for school operations, education platforms, and service delivery. Thank you.
Thank you. I see, we have Mark Cullings on the line, maybe before we move to questions and comments. Mark, I wondered if you could maybe give us your view on how the farmer's market went this weekend?
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
The, thank you, it's Mark Cullings, 44 Spring Street, and I'm the, the president of the market, and thank you, Tom, you took, stole all my thunder. The guts of the, of the comments are that, yes, we considered it to be a very successful opening. Last time I spoke with you all and got permission to move forward with the market on Station Street, we, we think we executed the plan pretty well. One of the, the big takeaways, and I've got a smile on my face, even though I'm not wearing a mask, one of the, the big takeaways from the, the three hours at Station Street on Saturday was how many people came and who had prepared, and they had followed directions. There was a lot of customer education that went on during the week before we opened, and people arrived, they arrived in their vehicles on time, according to the, their last names, they had their names written on pieces of paper, so that they were easily visible from the vendors that were going to visit. It was just terrific. And I want to give a particular shout-out to Sergeant Jeff Kilby, who helped us with the, the barricades and the, the planning Friday evening, and we've, we've talked since, we will follow through with some of his suggestions, and the chief's suggestions about keeping the area available to the market on Saturday morning, but it was a great, a great help and a, we all had smiles on our face when we got down to the, the parking lot on, early on Saturday morning, and saw the barricades up and, and caution tape and all of that, all set, ready for us to go. And another, I just want to recognize Dan Power and Hingham Link. We can't do this market, either this market as a drive-through or as we hope to evolve into a more traditional market, we can't do it without a cadre of volunteers to help us maintain COVID-compliant conditions, social distancing, whatever, and to answer questions and just overall be greeters and welcoming people, and the, the results from Saturday were just wonderful. It was a very collegial group, we have had a terrific amount of feedback from people who came to the market and were greeted by people, new friends of ours, that, some of whom we had, we had never met before, but it was, it was really terrific. We had eight vendors, six of which were old friends, and we have two new farms that have, have joined the market. And anyway, thank you, everybody, we look forward to this coming Saturday, we've got one under our belt, and we've got 20 some odd more to go before the season is over, and but, and a, just a reminder from Selectman Fisher, last time I, I spoke with you, he gave me the opportunity to tell people how to order from the market, and I kind of went out on a riff, as I'm sort of doing now, but people can go to the website, it's very simple to order from the, the vendors who are there, it is updated frequently to be sure that people are up to date when they do order, but also people should recognize that the deadlines are coming right up. First deadline is tomorrow night for one vendor, and then there are other deadlines that we have to give vendors time to get their orders together and packed for the market, so again, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mark, what is that website?
Oh, that's right, hanghamfarmersmarket.org.
Thank you.
Joe, any questions on Tom or Michelle's update, or any further questions for Mark?
No, I, I just was going to add that I have heard from residents of Hingham about how successful the farmer's market went, how pleased they were, how smooth the process was, so thank you. It was, it was really tremendous success, no other comments or questions.
Thanks. Mary, questions or comments for Michelle, Tom, or Mark?
I just wanted to make a point, because over the course of the weekend, since our meeting on Friday, I've gotten a few kind of phone calls and questions from residents wondering why Hingham did not consider going to wondering, uh, why Hingham did not consider going to a remote town meeting? Because, um, you know, people are saying, gee, the boards, you know, the boards are all going remote. And I just wanted to point out that because Hingham has an open-meeting form of town government, we don't have that option. Uh, communities like Wellesley that have a closed town meeting, um, the, the special legislation that was passed afforded them that opportunity. But for communities with an open town meeting, um, our options were more limited. And, uh, that in many ways drove, uh, the decisions made by the town. So I, I, I just wanted to add that because, uh, I've gotten a couple of questions in that, in that regard.
Great point. Anything further?
No.
Questions from the public with respect to the COVID update? If you could raise your hand on the screen, I can call on you. Not seeing anybody? Okay, um, we do have a couple of votes tonight, as Tom pointed out. We have the, um, con-concession agreement between the Town of Hingham and South Shore Model Railway, as well as the concession agreement with the Bear Cove Fire Museum. Tom, I'm assuming we'll just do the Lynch Field concession agreement, uh, later in, in June?
That's right.
Okay. Um, I-
And like I said, Susan is here if you have questions on these.
I, I've reviewed the materials and, and I'm all set. Joe, do you have questions or comments, uh, on the concession agreement or questions for Susan?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Mary?
I'm also all set. Thank you.
Questions from the public with respect to the concession agreements between the Town of Hingham and the South Shore Model Railway Club, or the Town of Hingham and the Bear Cove Fire Museum? Seeing none, I would accept a motion?
I move, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mary.
I'll make a motion to sign the concession agreement between the Town of Hingham and the South Shore Model Railway Club, Inc., for a one-year term ending May thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
All those in favor? Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
I would accept a motion for Bear Cove Fire Museum?
I move to sign the concession agreement between the Town of Hingham and the Bear Cove Fire Museum for a one-year term ending May thirty-one, twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
All those in favor? Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
All right. Uh, and then, uh, we have a request from the Town Clerk to move, uh, Lyndon Pons Polling Station from Lyndon Pons itself, uh, to the middle school. So it's Precinct Five, uh, which votes at the middle school. And Lyndon Pons is a subprecinct, uh, known as Five A, uh, and it's, it's a voting precinct right at Lyndon Pons. Uh, I don't know whether, I, I think I see Eileen on the line. Eileen, if, if you'd like to make a comment on this?
Sure. Um, yes, Five A is, was originally a part of Precinct Five, but they did, um, change it so that they could have it at Lyndon Pons. Uh, right now, I, Lyndon Pons has been on shutdown. And from what I understand, they will probably stay that way until, um, around the first, the beginning of July. So, um, that's one of the reasons why I felt as though it would be best for us to move the precinct from Lyndon Pons and bring it over to the middle school. We will have it as a, a separate precinct there. We have, we do have room in the gym for them to be there. And I think that's about it. I think that, I think it'll work out well. And it's, it, we have to have it open in case there are people that do not want to do an absentee ballot.
Right, and those are available on the website. Very easy to fill out that, um, that application. Don't wait so that Eileen and her staff have time to mail you a ballot if you would, if you would like to vote, uh, in that manner. Uh, and I, I understand from John Coughlin that, um, there's a notice period when you change a voting precinct of like seven days or something. So we're, we're, we're well within, um, providing that kind of notice to people in, in terms of where they would, uh, be voting.
Yeah.
Um, Joe, questions for Eileen?
Uh, no, I just want to make sure that our authorization is limited to a single voting, uh, day, which is June twenty-seventh, and does not automatically, uh, move or, or affect any other voting day.
That's certainly how I'm reading the vote.
Yeah.
Indicates-
I think it's how you voted.
Yeah, a temporary move, um, for Election Day, June twenty-seventh, twenty. I, I would concur with you on that.
Yeah. Joe? No, no other questions?
Okay. Mary?
Um, I just want to thank, um, uh, James Santola, Mr. Santolo, wrote, uh, the letter to the board on behalf of, of Lyndon Pons making this request. Um, I was also contacted by Dyke Crane, who's a resident at Lyndon Pons. Just, um, you know, that this was something that was important to him, and I know, Eileen, that he's spoken with you and, um, was involved in sort of the letter being crafted. So, uh, you know, just appreciate the ongoing partnership with Lyndon Pons. And I also just want to acknowledge Mr. Santola and his team's great efforts in keeping everybody safe and healthy at Lyndon Pons. Um, it's, uh, very, very much appreciated.
Yeah, I, I concur. And, um, Eileen, did you get a sense that there would be outrage by Lyndon Pons so that everybody knows? Or, or are there things that we can support in terms of, um, making sure that people understand that they can request, uh, an absentee ballot and that if they do decide to vote, they would be voting at, uh, at, uh, the middle school? Did you get a sense of a concession plan?
There's already been a notice sent out to them with absentee ballot applications attached.
Fantastic. Great. Questions from the public on the temporary move of the Five A precinct, precinct from Lyndon Pons to the middle school? Questions from the public? Uh, seeing, see, was that a question? Nope. Um, seeing none, I would accept a motion?
I'll make a motion that pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter fifty-four, Section twenty-four, the Board of Selectmen hereby temporarily moved, moved Subprecinct Five A from Lyndon Pons to oh-one Lyndon Pons Way, Willard Square, to the Hingham Middle School, eleven oh-three Main Street, where Precinct Five and Six now reside on Election Day, June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty.
Second, and I would just add for purposes of the written motion that there should be comma after the word reside prior to on Election Day.
Okay. Uh, would you like to, all those in favor of the motion as amended? Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Great. Okay. Thank you for that.
Could I just ask to have a copy of that so I can send it into the Secretary of State's office?
Yes, Eileen. Well, um, Heidi, can you, uh, perhaps you could email that language as Joe, um, edited to Eileen in the morning?
Sure, that's fine.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Heidi. Uh, appointments this evening? Any appointments?
Not, not tonight.
Okay. Uh, Selectmen and Town Administrator reports. Tom?
Uh, nothing tonight. Thank you.
Michelle?
Nothing for me either. Thank you.
Joe?
Just wanted to thank, uh, the town employees who've been working extended hours, doing incredible work. A lot of it behind the scenes. I've been in touch with many, but certainly, uh, many more who have, I've not been in touch with, who are just putting in incredible effort. Thank you. I don't know if you're getting enough thank-yous, but, uh, your work is really appreciated. That's all I have.
You're here. Uh, I've got a couple things. Um, sorry, bear with me. I just wanted to, I, I know many of you know this already, but, uh, there was a teacher at Plymouth River Elementary School who was named the NHL Teacher of the Year, Joan Kilban. Um, I gathered Charlie Coyle from Wamif is on the Zoom call, uh, making this, uh, announcement of this honor. And, um, uh, the NHL makes a thirty thousand dollar donation for classroom technology. So we, we, we applaud, applaud, uh, Ms. Kilban and, uh, congratulations on that. I wanted to acknowledge, um, the retirement from the Library Board, uh, by Edna English. Edna has been a, a long-time member of the Board, and if you just bear with me for a minute, I'd, I'd really like to read the resolution that David McHagan read at the Library Board meeting last week. And that is, "Whereas Edna English was appointed in nineteen ninety-five to the Board of Trustees of the Hingham Public Library and has served faithfully as appointed trustee and as elected member of the Hingham Public Library Corporation." And I'd just like to note that eight of those years she served as Chair of the Library Board. "Whereas Edna English also served the people of the Town of Hingham for sixteen years as a member of the school committee and for six years as a member of the Board of Selectmen and in several other volunteer capacities. And whereas Edna English in nineteen ninety-seven was justly voted Hingham Citizen of the Year for her many services to the town. And whereas Edna English has been a loyal, genial, and extremely hard-working colleague to her fellow trustees, a supporter and advocate of the directors and staff members and volunteers of the library, a highly intelligent and wise friend to countless citizens who love and depend on their public library. Now therefore, this Board of Trustees unanimously resolves to express its deepest gratitude to Ed, Edna English for her generosity, constancy, and unreserved service to her community, its people, and their great public library." I just really, really wanted, uh, you all to hear, uh, that resolution. Um, and, you know, I, I, it certainly goes without saying that the Board of Selectmen thanks Edna for her many, many years of public service. She's a true example of, um, of the Hingham volunteer tradition, and, uh, I know the Library Board of Trustees will miss her. Uh, last couple things. Uh, Memorial Day, this past Monday, yesterday, time, time flies. Um, I, I, I thought, for those of you who are able to tune in and watch the virtual presentation of Memorial Day that, uh, our VSO Keith German put together with the help of, uh, colleagues at Harbor Media, I, I, I thought it was tremendous. And I know, you know, I know there are a number of communities that are trying in their small and quiet ways to continue to remember, uh, those who have given their lives for our freedoms. But the extent to which, uh, VSR German and Harbor Media went to put on a tribute, uh, uh, of that caliber, um, took a lot of forethought and planning and commitment. And, uh, you know, I just, uh, was so proud to be a part of it. Moderator Mike Puzo, uh, student athlete Nick Campadu Lupo sang the, uh, Star Spangled Banner as he does. And Chief Warrant Officer and former Navy SEAL Jack Chapin, um, you know, gave the address. It really was a, um, I thought, a very moving tribute, tribute and a, a very well-deserved tribute to those, again, who have given their lives, uh, for our freedoms. So thank you to all who were able to tune in, and if you haven't, uh, there's a, it's on YouTube, so I commend it to you. Um, and then last but not least, in sort of building off, uh, Memorial Day, we talked a lot about lives of service on Memorial Day and, uh, being willing to commit yourself to something bigger than yourself. Uh, and it is in that vein that I'd like to recognize, uh, three graduates of the Military Academies, uh, this past spring. From the United States Military Academy at West Point, I'd like to congratulate Second Lieutenant Liam McCarthy, U.S. Army. Parents are Kevin and Nora McCarthy of fifteen Lantern Lane. From the United States Naval Academy, Annapolis, Second Lieutenant John McLaughlin, U.S. Marine Corps. Parents are Hugh and Mel at four Steamboat Lane. And the United States Coast Guard Academy, New London, Ensign, Ensign Joseph Mansali, U.S. Coast Guard. Parents, Mark and Mary Ann of thirteen Puritan Road. Uh, just tremendous, um, uh, lives of service, uh, that these young men will take part in on behalf of our community and our country. And, uh, you have our gratitude, uh, all three of those families. So thank you for being here tonight. Uh, thanks for, uh, great discussion this evening, and we look forward to, uh, talking with you next week. Thanks, everybody. Good night. Oh, motion-
Karen?
Karen?
Yeah.
Karen?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm, I can't raise my hand. I wanted to see audio, but, um, yeah. I'm just wondering, two quick questions. I just couldn't hear. Is it the, um, signup, I'm sorry, the, um, registration for town meetings starts at, was it? What time is it? Twelve-twenty?
Uh, noon, noon, I believe. Right, Tom?
It was-
The town, to, to, you can enter the town meeting at twelve-thirty, beginning at twelve-thirty.
Okay, can I, okay, and a face mask required?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure. Okay.
Yeah, and, and Carol, there'll be other stuff. You can reach out to me.
Okay, good. But twelve-thirty, they can enter and in face mask. Okay, I definitely, we'll keep, keep, uh, keep, yeah, keep posted. Thank you.
All right. Yep.
Bye-bye.
Okay. Anything else, anybody?
Karen, that is, I don't know if you did public comment. I just wanted to-
Oh, I didn't. You're right. Anybody, would anybody like to make a comment? Not seeing it. So now I will, in fact, accept motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.